In here because of this.
I said I would take responsibility for anything that happens.
You're on the record. Good morning, everyone. It's 10:02. We will go ahead and call the meeting Tuesday, December 6, 2022, meeting of the City of Dennison Planning and Zoning Commission to Order. We will go ahead to verify that we do have a form present so we can move forward. The next item will be the public comments section. I do not have any request to speak cards here, but if you would like to speak on a particular public hearing, you can do so at that time. So next, we will move to the consent agenda. And there are three items, it looks like, on the consent agenda. Are there any questions, comments on those items? Then I will entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. Consent agenda is approved. All right. We will now move to the public hearings section of this, of this meeting. And if you wish to speak on any of these items, when you do approach the podium there, please state your name and address for the record for us, please. And these items will go to the council meeting on...
So the majority of them are replats, but they would go to the December 12th, City Council.
And for the record, Mr. Redwine just recused himself.
Yeah, for item 4A, correct?
Correct.
Yes, for item 4A. All right. And speaking of item 4A, I will turn it over to one of you ladies.
Okay. Item 4A, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on a replat of lots 1R, 2R, 3R, and 5R, Block A of the Oakview Edition, case number 2022-109RP. This is an aerial view of the subject property. All of these lots that are proposed will front on South Chandler as Tone Street is not improved. It is all zoned, single-family 7.5. And if we could just go back to this one, I don't know which of these pictures would be easier for you to see, but I don't know if you see the right-of-way that goes through that property. That is, or was, a right-of-way that was to be dedicated to the Dennison Rapid Transit Railway a long time ago. And it was never utilized, it was never improved upon, and that right-of-way only exists from the top of this property to about the bottom of your screen. So even if they were...
I was wondering about that, because there's dwellings on the other parts, right?
Yes. It ends in what's Brookside, I believe. So it wouldn't be a very long train if it was going anywhere.
So it would be rapid.
It could be. So via this plat, that right-of-way that is on this portion will be abandoned. Thank you. I'm sorry. I forgot my words.
I was curious if it... It really can't be added to any other trail plans, can it? Nothing even close.
No.
No, and it would have to be consistent with all of those other master plans anyways, so it's not...
Moving to the lots, all of these lots, like I said, will front on South Chandler Avenue, and they all meet the minimum lot width, lot depth, and square footage for the single-family 7.5 zoning district. With that, the purpose of the replat is to create five lots fronting on Chandler, and staff recommends approval of the request. And I'm present for any questions you may have, and so is the applicant.
Any questions for Diane? The applicant like to add anything? You sure? Anyone else like to speak, or would anyone like to speak on this request? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing portion of this agenda item. And any other comments or discussion among commission members? Seeing none, then I will entertain a motion.
I move to approve the proposed replat.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. That motion is approved.
Did we need to say that he was in?
She already did, but now we... I will note for the record that Mr. Redwine will be rejoining us for the remainder of these agenda items. And we will move on to item 4B.
Item 4B, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on a replat of lots 168R and 167R of the Belmont Edition, case number 2022-114RP. This is an aerial view of the subject property fronting on East Tarrant Street, and the property is zoned, single-family, five. And the purpose of the replat is to create two lots and to kind of amend some lot lines. It appears there were some illegal subdivision done in the past, and so this plat will allow for both of these lots to have actual boundaries for their own property. They all front on East Tarrant Street, and they all meet the minimum development standards for the zoning. And staff recommends approval of the request.
Are the structures that are existing there, will those go away? Well, it shows structures on the map. Maybe they're not there yet.
Oh, I don't think they're... The purpose is to construct single-family homes. I'm not sure that there are structures there. I'm sorry, Mary. I don't have... I wasn't aware that there were structures on there.
Any other questions of staff? The applicant like to add anything?
Uh, there's no structures.
Any other, any questions for the applicant? Would anyone else like to speak on this request?
Hi, I'm Louise Moran. And yeah, there's no structures on this. My address as well. 910 South Travis Sherman, Texas. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak on this request? Then we'll close the public hearing portion of this agenda item. Any further comments, discussion among commission members? Then I will entertain a motion.
I move to approve the proposed replat.
Second.
I have a motion, and I think Mary, we'll give Mary the second, okay? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. All right, that motion is approved. We will move on to item 4C.
Item 4C, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on a replat of lots 1R-1, and that should be 1R-2, I'm sorry, Block 1 of the Gateway Edition Phase 6, case number 2022-127RP. This is an aerial view of that subject property. It's within the Gateway Village Plan Development. This is located off of FM 691 and Teresa Drive. What you see there is the Woodlands Trail facility. Like I mentioned, I said, it's a zone plan development. And the purpose of the replat is to create two lots from one lot. Both of those lots front on FM 691, and the applicant, upon approval of this plat, would like to move forward with constructing two medical office buildings. Because this isn't a planned development, the site plan for both of those properties will come before the commission for approval. And staff recommends approval of the proposed replat.
Any questions of staff?
I have one question, and this is... So maybe it's... I'm sorry, it's the next one. Never mind. I'm just curious what the use was going to be, and that's... That makes a lot of sense.
Medical office. Any other questions of staff? Would anyone like to speak on this request? Then we'll close the public hearing portion of this agenda item. Any discussion among commission members?
Mr. Chair, I recommend approval of proposed replat.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I second that.
And I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. That motion is approved. All right, we will move to item 4D.
Item 4D, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and make a recommendation on a request to rezone approximately 1.01 acres of a property located at 2030 Texoma Drive from the commercial zoning district to the light industrial zoning district, case number 2022-116Z. This is an aerial view of the subject property. Not within the view is Reese Foods, and that's just to the west. You've got Moffett West to your southeast off of Juanita, and currently it is zoned commercial. And the applicant hasn't provided us a zoning narrative in order for us to kind of expand on why they are wanting to change from a commercial to a light industrial zoning district. So their application at this time is incomplete. We have already noticed for this case. Therefore, staff is asking that the commission consider tabling this item to the next Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, which is January 10, 2023, in order to allow for the applicant to provide the appropriate documentation for his zoning request.
All right, any questions of staff? Would anyone like to speak on this item?
You don't have to ask for a public hearing. It's a safe place.
Just to be honest with you, I didn't think anybody was going to ask for it. All right. If seeing none, then any further comment, discussion?
No.
Okay, then I'll entertain a motion.
I move to table 4D until the next meeting.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. All right, that will be tabled to the January 10, 2023 meeting. All right, then we will move to 4E.
Item 4E, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on a replat of Lot 10R, Block 19 of the St. Michael and All Angels Subdivision, case number 2022-125RP. This is an aerial view of the property located on the corner of East Texas and South Houston Avenue, and this is the zoning district. It's zoned 2F, two-family. This property does have structures on it. It is being utilized as a church and a parsonage. And the purpose of the replat, the applicant would like to expand one of those structures to just provide more space for either the church or the parsonage. However, within the staff report, I mentioned that all of the expansions will need to meet the setbacks. Currently, one of those properties, if not both of them, are a little too close to the property lines. They're already built. They are where they are, but any expansions will need to fall within the setbacks that are required by the zoning district. A church and a parsonage use is allowed in all zoning districts, so even though this is a residential zoning district, that use is allowed. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of this replat so that the expansion does not cross property lines, and instead, they're both located on the same lot. I'm present for any questions, and so is the applicant.
To my understanding, is that the church people are planning to build another structure on that eventually, or something like that?
What they, what they put was to expand structures. So my understanding, based off that, would be to just add on to what's there. And as long as it follows the use of church, then they should be fine.
Any other questions of staff? Would anyone like to speak on this request? Not everybody wants. They're quiet back there. Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing portion of this agenda item. Any discussion, comments among commission members?
I'm just curious, where's parking on this parcel?
Where's what?
Parking.
There's some in the back. That may be something we need to look at whenever they come through with a permit for the expansion. That's a good question. Ms. Anderson?
Any other comments, discussion? Then I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the proposed replat.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. That motion is approved. That will take care of the public hearing portion. Move to staff updates.
We are going to adjourn, and then we will do the second half of our training. So that's our zoning. The only staff update I have for you.
Only staff update. We will be doing training, all right?
I'm sorry. I'd like to just go ahead and let you all know, we're... I'm going to try and get better at this with each meeting. The PD for the KD Trails Courtyards that came through, located at the corner of Spur 503 and Texoma Parkway, the annexation as well as the zoning for that was approved by council at the last meeting. Now, we'll just see what they can do with the land that they have. So they'll move forward with civils and plats, and once a preliminary plat is presented, that will come back before you all for approval.
I have a question. I don't know if this is appropriate time, because it's just an information thing. The... One of the things that was in the consent agenda is where I saw a road that I had a question about where Loy Lake is, that development that's going on there. It looks like when Loy Lake gets widened, it's going to be on the other side. Is that correct? From the map, it looks like the widening part will come more to the east of Loy Lake.
I'm not familiar with the construction of Loy Lake, what that looks like, so just like other projects.
Yeah, because the map is kind of... The map is not very decisive. Yeah, it's got to go one-sided.
There's many houses there, so they're not...
They want to be able to take those homes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you happen to know what the new width of Loy Lake is going to be?
I can't speak to that. The public works has all of that information. They've already designed it out. It's been approved. The funding has been approved, so that will be starting soon.
We just can't wait for that to happen, Dan, and to ramp it up, the whole thing.
Yep, yep. So that is, that is a discussion that we had, though, internally about that coming in and making sure that they were aware also of the intentions of that.
It's going to take a lot of work for whichever side they do.
Yep, yep. So we're in discussions about how best to buffer that and the landscape and all of that, so.
So are we going to go ahead and adjourn?
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unless you're opposed to training? All right, we are adjourned.
Anyone want to water?
Please. What did I do now? I knocked it totally back.
Did you turn on? We should have done training in January, like, not in December.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I'm going to go on board adjustments.
I guess, I guess it's the same.
You said?
This is my last meeting. I'm turning it off.
I'm wondering where, if it's not mine.
I should have made a big presentation.
I'm sorry. I was quiet. That's what I'm doing. I wasn't prepared.
Where are my flowers?
When they extended mine, I don't think they told me that what they extended.
Should have done training in January after he was already gone. So you said you're going on CBA? I guess it's basically the same, so you still have to train.
Uh, yeah. So the meeting dates were in the consent agenda as well for next year, so just take note of those. On Monday of next week, for council, we will make that recommendation from the applicants that we've received for P and Z, and then those people will be appointed. And then during the first meeting in January, that January 10 one, you will reorganize however you so choose to do so. Right, Brett?
Right. Is Spence the only one that is...
That's going off.
That's going off?
Uh, I don't... Spence is the only one that's coming off, yes. I thought you... Yes, he is the only one coming off. So Felicia has done a good job of getting the applications and making sure all of that is taken care of, so. Yeah.
You're just moving.
Repurpose.
That's right. That's how we like to do it. So. All right, so this is the second half of our training, and it's all about zoning today. So we are specifically talking about that. Last time, we did the roles and responsibilities. So what is zoning? And that's why you're all here, right? We talk about zoning cases all the time, as well as some other things. But it's the legal authority that you all have, the police power is given to the Planning and Zoning Commission in a municipality to enact zoning ordinances for the protection and preservation of the community. That's why we do it. That's why we have zoning in place. Police power differs from other legal forms because it's enforced by the city for the benefit of the public. So ever, all of the decisions that you make are based in the, what's best for the community. That's how you need to think of your decision-making power. So the history of zoning in Texas, the Standard Zoning Enabling Act was put in place in 1927. It gave zoning power to the cities, not to the county. So we work with the county director of planning, Clay Barnett. He does review some of our applications that we get for those that are outside of the city limits and in the ETJ, but they do not have zoning power. That is all within the cities. So zoning is required to be in alignment with your comprehensive plan. However, state statutes did not put comprehensive, did not mention comprehensive plans until 1998, which is crazy. That's really late. So you had cities trying to have zoning ordinances in place. Some of them had comprehensive plans long, long ago, but there was nothing requiring cities to do so. So it got a little messy. You know, Houston does not have any zoning. So a lot of people laugh at that, as you all just did, because you go there and you see things next to other things that probably shouldn't be there, and that's just an anomaly in the state of Texas. But it has to do with the timing of some of the enabling legislature and things like that. So you'll see that last bullet point, that zoning must be for the protection of health, safety, and general, general welfare of the public. We will use that language because it has legal standing when we do certain applications or when we make certain requests, because that can't be questioned. If we make a recommendation, and you all make a recommendation, using that exact language, that is what the state statute states. So that actually, you'll see that a lot, and that's throughout the country. That is the language that you'll see. Pardon me? It is. You're right. It is broad-based, so it's all on how you interpret it, interpret it, and substantiate it. But that's how we're able to, if we have a situation, and we've had a few recently of maybe substandard living conditions, that's how you can kind of make those arguments for zoning, for minimum property standards, all of that kind of stuff. So zoning is in Chapter 211 of Texas Local Government Code. Again, it helps us to preserve places and areas of historical and architectural importance and cultural significance as well. And in Texas, you, I say you, I'm included in that now, have, private property rights are really important to people here, right? So that also comes with zoning, because when you have someone, when you have zoning in place, it in, it kind of gives somebody a guarantee, almost, or at least infers that when you invest in a property, you kind of know what's going to develop around you based on the zoning. And that's why we avoid spot zoning. We don't want to get into those situations of changing that because you will notice, literally, we have to notice those surrounding property owners of a change. And they are looking to all of us to, to make sure that we are keeping in alignment with what was there when they bought that property and when they've invested in there. So private property rights also play into this a little bit. So the purpose of zoning is to regulate land uses so that we prevent having incompatible uses next to one another, that we are looking at density, and that's something that we, as a city, as the Planning and Zoning Commission, need to look at a little more closely. Lately, we've been getting a lot of questions from our developers in our pre-development meetings of what our density ratios are and what kind of density we have. We don't have that established. We don't have, you know, three and a half per acre or two and a half per acre, whatever that is. And we really need to be able to provide people with those answers. It will help us staff do our job better, and it'll help you to make decisions better. So that's something that is on our list to look at in the very near future. Zoning, then, can also help to regulate, no longer regulate materials, that changed, but it can regulate size, Florida area ratio, that's something that's called FAR. That's something that we can look at. Setbacks, and we don't always talk about setbacks being in place to prevent fire hazard, but that makes sense, right? So, and then the aesthetic value. Any questions so far? Linda, you're making a face. Are you okay? Do you have a question? Okay. I talk to myself when I'm thinking. Felicia and Diane will go, are you talking to me? Are you talking to yourself? Okay, so zoning regulations must be in accordance with your comprehensive plan. And your comprehensive plan is supposed to incorporate these bullet points. So we're talking about thoroughfare plans, which is our, the congestion and how we use our streets. And that is something that we will be reworking here shortly. I had a conversation with the county planner last week on the thoroughfare plan and how we can look at changing our streets and the flows, the flow of that a little bit. And I believe John and Phyllis also mentioned that when they came in to speak to us about the changes that they'll be making as well. We are looking at promoting health and wellness altogether. So air quality, light quality, the crowding of land, and how we provide the right infrastructure needs to all of our public facilities, so schools, parks, trails... to all of our public facilities, so schools, parks, trails, all of that kind of stuff, the transportation. And that's all outlined in chapter, or section 211 of the Local Government Code. And we have all of that upstairs, if you're so inclined to read it, we would be more than happy to share it with you. I did want to ask all of you if you have a copy of the comprehensive plan, or if you've looked at the comprehensive plan, because we've asked you to make recommendations based on our feedback, but I want to make sure that you also have that if you need it. So, it is online, but if you need a hard copy, let me know and we'll print one out for you. So, a comprehensive plan, what is it? Comprehensive plan is our guide. It's kind of like the bible of planning. It's supposed to have, be put together with public input, and have public meetings, and really get a sense of what the community wants to see developed in the long term. So, we, I was trained on an implementable comprehensive plan. So what does that mean? It means that you have those steps, those short-term, mid-range, and long-term steps to help you accomplish what you're aiming for 20 years down the road. So it helps us make zoning decisions better. It helps us when we are doing all of our review to make sure that it is in the comp plan. I think I touched upon last time that people always have ideas, right? They want us to do things, or they may come to you and say, "Hey, have you thought about putting in a..." I have no idea. "A Ferris wheel in Heritage Park as you're getting ready to do Heritage Park." And with that, if that's not in our comp plan, right? We're not looking to create a huge entertainment district right there of that nature. Maybe we have an amphitheater or something like that for concerts, but we're not looking to do those kinds of things. So your comp plan is really, and I say that because I like literally usually have it on my desk, and I don't right now. You vet things out through your comp plan. So if it's not in there, it's probably not something that you're going to entertain at the time. But it really helps us to make our recommendations. Diane, when she presents at council, she always puts her last bullet point. I forget how you worded it, but the comp plan supports this decision. Yes. So, knowing that helps council then also make their decisions, and letting them know that it's in alignment with what we're trying to do. So, zoning then is just one tool to enforce the comprehensive plan. We have certain cases in Texas that have gone before the Supreme Court because the comp plan either wasn't in place, or the zoning wasn't in place. And so these two cases are, highlight some of those. The Tippet versus the City of FAR is, and I may be pronouncing that wrong, it might be fair, FAR, I don't know, talks about a case that went before the Planning and Zoning Commission for plan development. And it, those kind of plan developments were within the comprehensive plan. The public was outraged about it, and so the Planning and Zoning Commission denied the application, and the city was sued, because the plan development met the long-term goals of the city, and they were highlighted in the comp plan. So they had, the applicant had a case and they won. So it's, that forbids actions that disregard long-range master plans. Means that you cannot deny an action just because the public doesn't want it. If it complies with the adopted comp plan, then you have to go ahead and approve that. So if it meets all the standards for development, and the setbacks, and all of those things that staff is responsible for looking at before it gets to you, then you have to approve it, or you could be sued, both personally and as a board. So we don't want that to happen at all for anybody, right? And the one other note in that was that if they are going to deny it one time because the public doesn't like it, and let's say another developer came back and with a similar concept, they would have to deny it again. You have to be consistent in those decisions. So one denial indicates that that property would be used for the benefit of the public. So you have to continue with that legal decision as a commission. Does that make sense? Yeah, okay. Sure.
What sort of mechanism might be possible to, in a hurry, amend the comprehensive plan to offset the potential of a suit if you saw it coming down the route? What is the tactic of the comprehensive plan?
So that would have to go before, any amendments to the comp plan still have to go before council. We can't just change all of that.
Well, I understand, you can't.
Yes. Right.
But basically, there's no timeframe by which the comprehensive plan...
We would still notice for that. You can't just say, yeah, we would still have to notice and make sure that there's a public hearing and things like that. We can't just go through and change things.
So, I think I'm trying to give a previous thing to the lines. If somebody comes in with something, causing the comprehensive plan, say like pre-acting or something, and we don't like it, we don't like that version of the comp plan, we can't, you know, just change that.
Shut it now.
So, we get into a lot of things called vested rights, you know, other legalities when it comes to things like that. So that's why, right now, we're looking at the comp plan with John and Phyllis, and we're trying to perceive what we've already seen, and then perceive what's coming.
Right.
We're trying to go ahead and tighten up those loose ends that were already in our comp plan.
When was the latest update on the comprehensive plan?
It was done in 2018, so. It is. The comp plan should be redone every five years, and then looked at annually to make sure that some of those updates, do we need to amend something, is something not working? Or did we put something in place and we realized, oh no, that is not what we intended, and it's being used differently? So we need to be able to go back and do that. So, so this one specifically that John and Phyllis are really looking at is looking at housing, and how to, our neighborhoods, and things like that. And I think staff probably overwhelmed them the day that we met with them with all the things that every department was like, "Oh, we want all of this done right now." But we truly need to do a zoning ordinance rewrite, a sign ordinance rewrite. We need to look at our subdivision regulations, our landscaping. There are a lot of things that we need to put some significant resources into, and when I mean resources, time and money. A zoning rewrite costs upwards of a hundred thousand dollars. That's a lot of money for our department. I don't have a big budget. So, we have to, but we also can't put everything on hold, right? Like, we still have to have our smittle dates and our pre-development meetings, and so that's where it gets tricky of how do I prioritize and give direction to staff to make those changes? So I'm always open to your feedback. If you hear of something that you are noticing on the street, or you hear chatter about that you think needs to be a priority, please let me know as we're trying to work through and figure out how to pay for some of that stuff, and make those improvements to those documents.
So Mary, five years is a sort of a standard?
It is. Not, in Texas, it's not mandated. In other states, it is mandated that you are required to do it. Five, 10 in Pennsylvania. Mm-hmm.
The state of Georgia, you don't have to take your comp plan, or even if you don't have a comp plan, you're not allowed to modify the one's comp plan.
That's correct. So there are, and we're...
Right.
It is, it is.
You don't have to, you're just...
And you may be aware, the county does not have their hazard mitigation plan in place. That's required by FEMA. And so we have lost out on a ton of funding, because when we, as a city, apply for certain funding, we have to show that the county has that plan in place. So a lot of communities recently were upset about this, and so they are working to get that done now. They've hired a consultant, they've had two public hearings, and I believe, I went to the meeting last week, the draft will be ready in January. So that'll open up funding for both the county and the cities in Grayson County, because we have to have that, and that's required. So, I don't know how it got to that point, but that comes from the city saying, "Hey, what is going on here? You work for us in some way, we need that to be in place."
But it's interesting, because 2018 sounds pretty recent.
It does.
Five years.
Right.
Five years to be honest.
Right.
And I'm thinking about some of the things we've discussed on the board before. One of them, well, one of them is very visible because of the school changes, and it gets decided about that.
Yep.
And so, that would definitely need to be addressed. And then, the other thing is that we can't foresee the difference in the growth patterns right now. It looks like most of the growth is right along 75, but that's maybe not for always.
Right.
We can't foresee some of those things are going to change.
Right.
I can see where sometimes it might be necessary more than 35 years.
Yes, and that's a great point, because in our planning, both the Public Works Department is planning for the impact fees right now. And so we have been asked to put together those growth projections, and it's like, one development could really change that. So, it's hard to make those projections. And the county did put projections out earlier this year, and they've acknowledged that we've already exceeded that. So, it makes it hard from a planning perspective, too. So to have those updates more frequently is really important. Right, right. So, the components of zoning, what does our zoning ordinance, like physically and literally, look like? We have text, that is all the legal jargon as written by the legal staff, and then we have the zoning map. And you can't have one without the other, you have to have both of those in place. And then, of course, you have your comp plan, so they all work together. The zoning text outlines what has been adopted by ordinance. So that's exactly what we have to follow when we're looking at, we get phone calls every day about, "Well, I'm looking at buying this piece of property, what can go there? Can you tell me, what are the setbacks?", all of that kind of stuff. And so, we all are pretty versed in, Felicia and Diane, much more than I am at this point, answering those questions right off the bat. They know the setbacks, they know what can go there, and they are great resources. You are. And so, the zoning ordinance should be written in a language that's easy for all of us to understand. That's debatable, right? We can all read legalese. Sorry Brett. Differentally, sometimes, sometimes it's easy to understand, and sometimes it's not. In fact, some of our zoning ordinance amendments that we did, when it comes in the ordinance, I had to go back to the staff report, because the way we write it is much easier to understand than the way the legal staff puts it before us. But that's the document that's out there to the public. So how do we change that moving forward to make sure that it's easy to understand for anybody on the street who doesn't have that background, and is just looking to develop their property or purchase a property? It should be well organized and concise, and then it has those exact regulations, as I stated, for each of the areas. So the zoning map then shows the different districts and what those boundaries are. It's usually different colors for each district. It tells us what land uses are allowed in each area, and then it's accessible for public view. So, this comes directly from our website. The one on the left is our zoning map, and it, the different colors tell us that yellow is the single family. The hatched, diagonal hatch lines are the overlay district, so you have the highway-oriented district. Morton Street is the one towards the top. And so the different colors mean different things. Light blue is plan development, we have some local retail and commercial in there. So, that is how we determine, how we distinguish those areas in the map. On the right, we have all of those maps on our website. So if you go to City of Dennison, and then the planning area, you can look at all of those. And that's how we confirm when we're going through and looking at an application, if something's allowed in that area. We also use the Grayson CAD quite frequently to make sure that everything is in alignment. Sometimes the updates to those take some time. So, we have to verify as best we can to make sure that everything has been updated. But all of that is in, accessible for public view. The one thing I wanted to mention, because we get questions about it, and Public Works does as well, the only maps that aren't available are the infrastructure maps, and that's due to federal law for, I forget what it's called, Homeland Security, thank you, due to possible attacks. So, people will always ask us, they're looking to develop, "Well, can you tell us where the sewer line is, or the water line?" And we cannot tell them that. And we can't share that map with them, which makes it a little hard, right, to do this job? So, when we have our pre-development meetings, Public Works is there, and that is their job, is to know which applications and pieces of land, and they can tell people, yes, you have a six-inch water sewer line, and you need to tie in here on all those things that are really important to the engineers. So the basic elements of the zoning ordinance, we touched upon, well, we are going to touch upon all of this, but we have all of these things incorporated into our zoning ordinance. The definitions, the use chart, the districts, non-conforming uses. It helps us to make those, explain and substantiate why decisions are being made. So definitions, and I laugh at this as I was reading it last night, because this is giving us a little bit of headache, the three of us, quite often, actually. So this is one of those things that we need to take another look at. We will get calls for certain uses, and trying, like you know it should be allowed in like a commercial area, but for whatever reason, it's not on the use chart, or it's not defined somewhere. So then we are trying to fit it into an area that is not the definition, but it fits into a general category. So we need to make sure that, this is one of those priority list items for me, that the definitions in the use chart are, yeah, that they are up to speed on the kinds of things that are coming in, and that they match. We don't want something on our use chart that has an asterisk, should have a definition. And sometimes it does, and sometimes it doesn't. So you're like, how can the public use that? It's not user-friendly to us, so it's not user-friendly to the public. So, the best-case scenario is that it would be, they would match up exactly. It would be easy to understand, and that it would help us all make better decisions. We've been able to do it. We haven't done anything that we're like, "Oh, I don't know about that." Like, we've not had any situations like that, but we want to make sure that it's as clear for all parties to use. The use chart is a matrix, it's a grid, it has every use that we've come across, almost, and we're keeping a running list of other things that come before us. And it will have the, all the different zoning districts up at the top. And then it has a C if it's a conditional use permit, it'll have a P if it's permitted in that district, or it's blank, meaning that it's not allowed in that district. So, that's how we, Felicia does this all the time, she's flipping through her book to make sure when she gets a question, that something's allowed within a certain district. So zoning district requirements then establish the development standards for each district. It confirms the permitted uses, and then if it's a specific use or not. So it's just our development standards for that specific district. And those are the things that are in your staff reports and on the slides that you see, telling you if something is, how it's zoned, and what's allowed to be done there. Sometimes the zoning ordinance includes off-street parking requirements. This is a question that developers are always, always asking about, you know, because parking's expensive. Surface parking is very expensive, and it takes up a lot of land. So, this is a debate between main streets and developers, and all of that kind of stuff. So, um, this is a debate between main streets, um, and developers and all of that kinda stuff. So if you can find a way of having a parking credit, which we don't have right now, um, that's something that I'd like to look into of, um, maybe it reduces the amount of parking that's needed because they've added parking somewhere else. It's just getting the public into the mindset of like, you might have to walk a little bit, right? You may not be able to park right in front of the business on Main Street, but maybe you have to park in the lot behind City Hall and walk over. Um, and that's like a, that's a national planning, um, debate constantly on how much parking is actually needed to go with a, a building. Uh, so when you get into like downtown downtowns, like if you got into Dallas, they have a pretty strict, um, parking requirement, but they also offer, um, a parking credit. So you can find ways of manipulating, uh, the parking based upon, um, the amount of space you have. So a conditional use permit, that's what we call it here. It can be called a special use permit or a specific use permit in other places. So if you run across that, it is the same thing. It puts conditions on that specific use. So, um, we often have CUPs here. Um, and it means that the use is compatible with the surrounding area, but it may not be a, um, why can I think, it's not a, um, permitted use per se. So you have to get a conditional use permit with those conditions. So for example, um, we had the Bob Utter, uh, CUP come through a couple weeks ago and, um, that was in the highway overlays, so they had to meet specific, um, fence or screening requirements and masonry for their, um, building. And if they were to expand, um, they had to have certain requirements in there. Some of the, uh, businesses downtown have, they all have CUPs, many of them. Um, and they may put in there that they are only allowed to operate until eleven o'clock or things like that. So it specifies what those conditions are. The CUP has to be requested by the property owner or the applicant and then the applicant, if it's a tenant, would have to have this, uh, sign off of the property owner. Um, we are looking at right now, we don't have a process in place for inspecting the CUP. So once a CUP is granted, how do we know that that applicant has done what they're supposed to do? Who is responsible for doing all of that? So I'm looking at that currently. We have found that some of our CUPs, um, require like a hundred and eighty days to get a, a building permit of some sort, but not all of them. So we need to really work on making sure that they're consistent when they're written and then, uh, making sure that the applicant reads their CUP so that they know if something should expire or not. Um, we've run into that situation recently where a woman said, well, I didn't know that it expired. Well, ultimately you're responsible for reading what you've been granted, but if we can help facilitate that a little bit, then that's what we should be doing as well. So, um, I have a meeting this afternoon on CUP process afterwards, after it's been granted. And what does that look like every year from an inspection standpoint, making sure people are doing what they're supposed to be doing? And we have, go ahead.
I was gonna say like screening requirements?
Yes.
Different things like that, that.
Yeah.
Some of the stuff that may have gone through here and.
Correct, right, right. So, uh, I forget what I was gonna say now. No, but just making sure that people are doing what they're supposed to be doing. And we do have ways of trying to make that happen, such as issuing a temporary certificate of occupancy rather than their permanent. Uh, some take it more seriously than others and so that's the challenge of, what do you do now that you've issued a temp CO and you've given six months and yet nothing's been done? And yet you know they're operating, like those situations, it can get messy and trying to figure out the best way of doing it. Um, because we don't wanna to be contentious at all, but we need to make sure that everyone's being held to the same standard. I inspected that one. I did, they did everything before I issued their CO. Uh, I went and looked at it, um, he put up landscaping, he, uh, paved it asphalt, it's striped, it's clean. But that was also within, we know that, um, our landscape ordinance says eight percent. Sometimes it doesn't work, like it literally does not work with the space that they have and how much parking they have to have. So we have to be able to negotiate that and make sure that they are meeting, doing the best they can with what they have. You know, so it does get. But that's, I mean, that is some of the stuff that is. Right. Yes, and to your point though, I mean, we can go knock on the door. Uh, they can get letters, they can receive all kinds of things, but. Yes, it has to be documented so that someone cannot come back to us. Well, and it becomes difficult when there's a property owner and a tenant. A tenant who may not be aware of what the property owner, uh, is responsible for or not for and things like that. And that's where I think, um, morally, you, you want to approach it in a way that is, you just have to be careful of all of that, you know? You don't wanna displace the family when they had no clue. So just, but to Brett's point of having a process and procedure and policies in place so that if someone comes back and says, well, you can't do that, well, it's here and it's publicly known. And so we have to put that in place before we can take action on a lot of things. Making sure that it's explicitly detailed in that CUP that council approves. And that's our responsibility as staff and the legal team to make sure that we are reviewing that and saying, oh, wait a second, we need it to say this as well. Any other questions on CUPs? Okay, so non-conforming uses and structures, um, our ordinance does, uh, address both of these. Um, so a non-conforming status means that, uh, the current zoning requirements, uh, do not allow that use. Um, sometimes when we talk about non-conforming, it means that it was grandfathered in. Um, so, uh, we have several of those, uh, examples. Um, we also just made a zoning amendment about some of those non-conforming structures and if they were allowed to be rebuilt or not. Um, and that was because when lenders were coming to us, um, to verify what the zoning district was, they, mortgages were getting tied up and closings were being held up because they didn't have, um, confidence that, that the home could be rebuilt if something happened to it. So we had to amend a little bit to make sure that that issue was addressed, so that, that has been taken care of, um, at this point. So, um, you'll see in that example, um, that there's a neighborhood convenience store having, uh, ten, uh, spots, because at one point in time, that's all that was required. Maybe the parking requirements have changed, uh, and now twenty-five spaces are required, which maybe makes absolutely no sense, I don't know. Um, so things get, it's, uh, things get, uh, grandfathered in and that's what a non-conforming use or structure is. Um, non-conforming uses, um, specifies what enlarging or expanding that use can be. So we had a case, um, last couple planning and zoning meetings ago where we had a, it was on six ninety-one where there's a liquor store. Um, and they couldn't change the use, um, because it was a non-conform, is that right? It was a non-conforming use there, so if they changed the use, um, a liquor store would no longer be allowed. And that's why they rezoned it. It was local retail, other way around, commercial, single family, thank you. Right, to a different use. Right. So it has to stay the same, is my point. Yes. Uh, the zoning board of adjustment, so that is ZBA. We have a meeting on Thursday, um, that is the first one since I've been here. They don't, they only happen as needed, so it's not a consistent meeting schedule like zoning, um, like planning and zoning. Um, they are quasi-judicial, meaning that if it goes through the process and a resolution isn't met, um, it goes to the district court. So it's a little bit of a different process. We have a case this week, um, a gentleman's, um, had some encroachment and his, I probably, you're not on there yet, so, okay. His, he owns two lots, he, um, meets the square footage for the required lot size, but the frontage doesn't meet. So it is a hardship that we have essentially put on him. So, um, ZBA cases are for variances, but there has to be undue hardship. Uh, so that means it can't just be because someone doesn't wanna do something. So I've had recently, um, some situations where people don't wanna put sidewalks in. You cannot request a variance just because you don't wanna do it. It doesn't work that way. Um, you have to meet our development standards. So, um, this gentleman is, his lot meets the right size. It's just due to how it was plotted that the frontage is not correct. So that is, um, an acceptable hardship. Uh, and we would recommend that ZBA approve that variance because he still has the right space, but it's needed to build on it.
Or a month.
Variances into setbacks and things like that mainly.
Right, but it has to be for a reason that they, that's unavoidable. You know, that wasn't self-created or just because you don't feel like doing it. Right, and you can't say that and it can't be a fi- it used to be that it could be a financial hardship, it can't anymore. Um, and I, that makes it hard. Every case that I ever heard that was a ZBA was due to financial hardship. And so that puts people in a really, that's a tough spot to be in. Um, if they're trying to do what they can with what they have as best they can and it, it just makes it more difficult. Nope, that's. And with the cost of material, so that's why a lot of people don't wanna do concrete right now. Concrete is so expensive, but our development standards require that in certain situations. And we're, with new development, we require sidewalks because that's a quality of life thing that we wanna see in all parts of the city. Um, and that's, developers don't wanna do that. Not all of them, a lot of them recognize the importance of that, but that is why. It, it comes down to the financial feasibility of, of what they can do right now. So, and I mean, we recognize that. Correct, and that's why it doesn't count anymore. So, yeah. Okay, so, um, how do we amend an ordinance? Uh, we've gone through this a few times. So, um, we have, uh, noticing requirements of certain amount of days that something has to be put out to the public, so it has to go to the newspaper. Felicia has those deadlines that she has to meet to get something, um, to the newspaper in time for it to meet the, um, state, uh, noticing requirements, uh, for certain things. So, um, there are ten days sometimes, some days, it, sometimes it's fifteen days depending on what it is. Um, so, uh, when we go through and make those amendments, we just define what that amendment will be, what it's replacing, um, and we have to notice and, um, do all of that. So we have a defined process for all of that. Uh, that is why we have public hearings with all of those. It has to be put out to the public and the public has to have the opportunity to voice their opinion as to whether or not they agree or disagree. We haven't had any, we did a lot of zoning amendments just recently and we did not have anybody during those meetings voice their opinion. We often hear about it after the fact and after something has gone into effect. Um, at that point in time, you know. Really? Right, um, so if they came and at least voiced their opinion beforehand, um, it, you know, it's just making sure that the public knows that is your opportunity to, to come before council and have your opinion be heard publicly and then it's on record. So whether or not they take that into consideration is up to council. Uh, other tools that we use in zoning are our overlay districts. So, um, overlay districts can be, um, take a step back, so we use overlay districts, planned developments, and then special districts. We don't use special districts here very often. Um, and I would say our leadership is not in favor of special districts such as, um, municipal, municipal utility districts, muds and puds. And they have all different, they're all different. I know, muds, puds, and pids and bids, they're all different kinds of districts. So, um, we don't use those a whole lot, but we do use the PDs, the planned developments, as you all know, and then the overlay districts. So overlay districts put another layer of regulation in certain areas. So we have the highway overlays, we have the downtown overlay area, we have Morton, uh, street overlays. We have all these different overlays, right? And we have to really, um, be aware of what district that falls in and what those regulations are as we talk to developers about that, um, and property owners. Uh, so there can be airport overlay districts, um, neighborhood stabilization districts, which might be something we look at in the future. Um, maybe we are able to secure some funding and we can put that into a neighborhood stabilization, um, project or something like that. Um, but it helps us to keep certain characteristics of the area and then helps it to develop in a way that we wanna see it develop.
Are you still able to create those districts?
The specials?
Well, just like the overlay districts.
Yep.
Lots of materials and things like that, so they are historical overlays. Um, so at this time we can still.
There was a time when they were talking about including some other buildings in the historic preservation.
That might be, that might be a little bit different.
That's different.
That might be different, your historic downtown overlay is from one hundred block of Main Street. So you're, that might be different. Your historic downtown overlay is from one hundred block of Main Street and your adjacent streets to the six hundred block of Main Street and those adjacent streets.
They were talking about picking up some others.
The buildings may be historically, um, of historic value, but they may not hold them in overlay.
And the district boundaries can be changed. I think that's what you're, the.
So that would not be considered part of overlay. It's just that they can designate.
Correct. Mm-hmm. And it depends how it's designated.
If you have a city commission thing as opposed to a city thing.
That would be HP would start looking at that, and, um, it, it will be staff to, um, making that recommendation.
I will say though, to amend an overlay, how the zoning district or anything, it has to come into compliance with whatever the legalities are. So if they want to expand that historic overlay, it may take away any kind of requirements that they are allowed to enforce, uh, because of the laws change. Talk about repotting and.
Yeah.
So if we expand our highway overlay, which our highway overlay is almost seventy-five, so we have that help. But if we wanted to extend it, we would lose the ability to require those.
So planned developments, um, this has historically been used here, uh, a lot more frequently than other places have it. Um, and it's to get, I don't want to say get around, um, but it's to give a little more flexibility to what the developer wants to do. Um, so it, it offers an alternative to some of those regulations, right? We're able to put into those planned development, um, districts, um, and the, the developer will come to us saying, this is what we want, X, Y, and Z. We work with them and say, well, maybe you need to add this, or we would like to see this, and it states exactly what they should be doing. Um, we have some that are very regimented and others that aren't. They're pretty broad, and so you're like, how did that happen? Um, but it, this should not be used, um, as a regular tool. So we need to find a way that comes back to our density discussion and, um, creating neighborhoods where we want them rather than having our whole city be planned development districts that all have different regulations within them. So, um, we have a meeting tomorrow about one, um, so we have to go back into our research so that we know what was included in that PD ordinance because they're all different. So, um, again, it, it's a challenge for us because we can't put things on hold to make sure that we're getting what we would like to see. Um, so we have to find a way of doing this consistently and trying to figure out where development should be taking place, the kinds of developments that should be taking place within a certain area. But, um, this allows us to negotiate a little bit more, uh, outside of traditional zoning. Um, these, as you know, go before council. There are public hearings with you. There are public hearings with council. Um, we do get pushback on some of these because, um, they increase density oftentimes. Um, and depending on where it's located, that, that could make a neighboring property owner not very happy. Um, but we don't want to use this as a, a consistent, um, tool just to get around the rules. So, um, that's something we need to take into account as well. Um, they have to submit site plans with, uh, a plan development, so, um, making sure that, um, the site plan, if it's part of the ordinance, it has to, and there's an amendment to it, it has to go back through the public hearing process. If it is not part of the, um, application and the ordinance, then we have the ability, um, admin, staff has the ability to make those changes administratively. Um, but for transparency purposes, we would want it to be put, um, within the ordinance so that, uh, everybody's aware of what is going on. Oh, did I, I skipped that slide, sorry. So it should be used for unique developments, just not routinely. Um, we do have, uh, the procedure spelled out and how and when things have to come before, uh, P and Z and council. So factors to consider when making zoning decisions, um, is it consistent with the comp plan? Um, that should be the number one question. Do we have information that supports a change? Should we be making amendments? How often should we be making amendments? Um, and that's when we're looking at our patterns of growth and things like that. How do we want, uh, to change moving forward? Uh, what are those land uses and what does the surrounding area look like? And is it in our best interest as a city to develop that or to leave something as green space? Um, and everybody has a different opinion on that, so having, um, leadership have those discussions and those debates, whether we all agree or not, we just have to come out with a resolution once we all share, um, those opinions. Looking at infrastructure, um, what those impacts are to our water and sewer lines and our roads. Right now, we often talk about capacity. Can our aging infrastructure handle the additional capacity that a development is bringing in? Um, and a lot of time, the answer is no, it can't because we have a lot of older water lines and sewer lines, and public works is really, really, really working hard to, um, make sure that that, um, gets improved quickly, as quickly as they can afford. Um, looking at size and location of the parcel, and then, I mean, you all know this stuff because these are the, the things that you're approving and the questions that you ask. So, um, is the location, uh, appropriate for the use, um, and the density there? Other factors to consider are, is it a reasonable use of the property? Um, does this make sense? Um, and you have the ability to deny an application if it is not in the best interest of the city, right? We're taking out personal opinion and, um, looking at the benefit, uh, to the city and to the public. So what does, what can zoning do? Um, it determines the appropriate use of our land, sets development density. That's what we need to determine soon. Um, and then creating area regulations. There is something called form-based code. Uh, we don't have that here. Um, Oklahoma City started with form-based code about thirty years ago on their River District. Is that what it's called? Bricktown. Um, and I was fortunate to see the woman who started it speak a long, long time ago. Um, and form-based code is based on form. It doesn't go on uses, so it doesn't go on like single family or, um, um, commercial or anything like that, but it's different from Houston, right? It's not just throwing stuff out there. Uh, so I like to describe form-based code as in the center of town, you would have your greatest height, and as you go out, the height, uh, lessens. So it's simply based on form. Miami uses form-based code. I don't know if you've been to Miami.
So does Fort Worth Stockyards.
Yep.
Where there's, um, the, the entire stockyard is at form-based code. And what they tried to do was keep the historic value as much as they could, but where, like she said, where you work from the center out, the form became a little less intensive. So right there on Exchange, they wanted it to really look like what it did back in the days when they were just looking at all this. But as they went out, it's a little bit relaxed on, um.
They were shooting each other, not.
On the type of requirements that they had in order for it to be historically accurate. So that's, that's one.
Good example. And you shouldn't.
I'll, I'll give you a good little FYI on that, not right now, but they, I went there for APA, not this past year, but here prior, and they still have a building where they can just bring them in. Nope.
I just wanted you to be aware of it because it is a, it's a different philosophy of, um, development. I doubt that we'll ever see it here. It's, um, you never know though. You, it's really hard to have, you have to have one or the other though. You can't have both, so.
They used to live in a place where they had a sunshine law, and their sunshine law, and you could not build anything that blocked somebody else's sunshine.
That's a different sunshine law. I, Sunshine Act. Um, I like that, right? You have to, I mean, that goes back to the light and air and well-being of, of people and what they need. Huh.
It's okay in the city to have high rises, but you, you start moving to the little more bird places, and you couldn't build a, an apartment building next to somebody's house. It's going to block you.
Can you imagine doing that in the United States? Suburban sprawl would be like, what?
Yeah.
Yeah.
California, California where it moved so fast.
Yeah.
All of a sudden, Wayne Park, which used to have lots of cows, all of a sudden had people with houses, and they were complaining about the smell of the cows. And you decided to live in a place where there are pastures. What do you expect?
No, I, um, my parents moved me to a place like that when I was thirteen years old, uh, from the city, and we, they did not get air conditioning until I went to college, and in the summer. Thank God I wasn't in Texas because the heat wasn't that bad, but the smell of cow and pig and.
This is up in the ends, right?
Yes, it was bad.
So I mean, it gets hot there.
Oh, yeah, it still gets in the nineties, but, yeah. And then they got, as soon as I went to college, air conditioning. And things you can't do with zoning. Um, you can't dis, determine design, subdivision design. Um, can't have any impact on race, income, occupation of residence. Uh, we did, we put a fair housing memo out to, uh, council recently to make sure that, um, that language that would indicate or, um, a certain kind of income level, race, um, they just can't say any phrases like that. We don't ever want it, uh, to say that we're not in favor of a certain kind of development based on those things. Um, that's not right, and the Fair Housing Act, uh, requires that you don't do that, and you will get in trouble if you do. So, uh, Julie, our attorney, at, during that council meeting, she actually spoke up and said, we just want to be clear. We are not saying that we don't want kids or something like that because it was a senior housing, um, project. And so she had to put that on the record that we do, we're not saying we don't want children. Pardon me? It was the way, it was, I think it was the way that the applicant phrased it. Um, they said, uh, there won't be any kids here or something like that, and so that's what triggered her to say that. Yeah.
And we're zoning based on the appropriateness of the land.
Right, not on the type. Yeah, yeah. Um, but you saw her like.
Yeah, it was different.
I know, I think we all were like, oh no, because we had just put the memo out to them. So, um, we can't guarantee quality development. We always say we want quality development, right? I mean, we expect that, um, but we cannot guarantee that. Uh, and again, that's subjective, so, um, and we can't put things in, zoning doesn't have any control over the architectural, um, features unless there's an architectural review committee in place, and we did, um, our PDs do have to have that, so. So potential problems with zoning are the spot zoning that I referred to, like in Houston, where you can just put things wherever. Um, we won't do that here. We would never make a recommendation for that, uh, and that does not go with our comp plan. So, uh, we wouldn't do that. Taking issues are like eminent domain. Um, you don't, we don't want to find ourselves in, um, uh, taking situations, um, just to take something, right? There has to be a plan in place. Um, future thoroughfare plans, um, thirty years down the road may go through property that has a house on it right now. Um, and part of my meeting with the county last week was reworking some of those, um, configurations to avoid those situations. We don't want to do that. Um, that's not in our best interest as a city. Um, and then exclusionary zoning. We talked about last time, making sure that all businesses, whether we, like the sin businesses, um, they have to have a place. We can't exclude any use, um, from our zoning, um, ordinance. So everything has to have a place, and that's what exclusionary zoning means. So just being aware that we can't say, mm, we don't want that, go to Sherman, you know? We still have to find a place for them, so. Any questions on zoning? It's not as, okay, good. It's not always as exciting as other topics, but it's important. You're welcome. You're welcome. Thanks. Okay, sure. We can print that out for you. Anybody else?
I would like it emailed.
Emailed, okay. Yep.
I'll take an email copy of it.
Okay. So I made.
Four years ago, I'd emailed somewhere, about four thousand messages.
Yeah, I know. There's a link, it, so it's on our website. But it also, it has like the thoroughfare plan, then the parks master plan, all in the same area because they're not in one document. Are you okay with that?
I'll get on mine, yes.
I don't, no, I like to, I always have. Nope, I like to mark my things up, you know, I like to have a hard copy and make my notes on there. Okay, okay. The parks one is, like, it's a great document. We've, um, all of us depart, across departments have to do a better job of, um, when we get applications for developments and making sure that we are looking at thoroughfare plan, making sure we're looking at the parks plan. Um, and if we have to make a recommendation of, no, we really don't think you should put that there because in ten years, we hope to have a park there, whatever, or there's going to be a road coming through here, and you may not want to put a house there. We just need to be forthcoming in that information as well so we don't find ourselves in situations down the road.
As part of that, I guess, as far as like the thoroughfare plan or something like that, like you have a current road, but there's development. Something's coming through. Do you look at it like, okay, hey, we may have you dedicate additional right-of-way because this two-lane road may, you know, is, looked at to be, you know, four lanes at some point in the future.
Um, and in terms of like configuration, some of the roads do go windy, and there's a way of keeping them on the right side.
Right. Sure.
Mary, kudos for everybody working so hard together, all departments, to bring things up to the place where they need to.
I'll start that with that.
Well. I mean, that, it's, it's important, and we all appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think we're.
I think we've all gotten into a groove of doing that, or at least a level comfort where you can go and ask someone a question and not feel like you're stuffing all your toes. And that's across everywhere.
Well, that's good.
It is good. There's a level of trust and information sharing.
A good staff where I think we all share the same. Not, I don't know if values is a good word, but it, it, we, we all look the same thing. It's not as connected as what it used to be, so.
Right, I was going to say, yeah.
Are y'all still seeing the same?
So you're kicking us out.
A lot of stuff coming in.